Welcome to the Miami City Council meeting. It's October 6th. Our municipal clerk is on vacation this week and our finance director is our designated backup for today.
Ready.
Okay. And we'll call the roll, please.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Lineback?
Yes.
Puffenberg?
Yes.
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Biscus?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is committee the whole. And also, there is a master plan discussion entered into this, but I'll turn that over to President Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. First order of business, I'd like to add an item to the agenda. This is for the stop-loss coverage, stop-loss coverage for the City of Miami Health Insurance. Council previously approved this for the application for a stop-loss coverage. This is authorization to sign the agreement, so I'd like to add that to J-9J on consent. I'm sorry, that's wrong.
No, it's right.
That's right.
That's 9J, yep. Oh, there's 9J, thank you. Okay, having your agendas in front of you, are there any questions or concerns you have? Ms. Puffenberg?
Thank you. So I guess one of the questions I have is, so 9, for 9E, 9E. So my question is, why would we want our urban planner, the position for urban planner, to be in a, like, on the Arrowhead Architecture Board? I guess that kind of, was that in, like, before? I know we had, like, a list of people. Did we have, like, some alternates or?
For the Arrowhead Board?
Yes, for Arrowhead Board.
Presently, it's Patrick is the, Birch was the main person to be on the board, and then I was an alternate. It really involves a lot of sign issues, you know, architectural type issues. So Gina's familiar with all those, so at least for now, it would be appropriate for her to take over that role. I mean, I don't know most of that. They don't really provide the materials in advance.
So this is essentially, could be a placeholder until we have that person in the urban planning position?
Yeah, we can also change it. Like I said, their architectural board has their own architectural standards, but we also compare their architectural standards with the City of Miami requirements. And generally, it comes up, requests for signage changes, additional signs. Like the super eights changing to a smart hotel. So there was, like, some painting type designs that they wanted approved at the last meeting. And then I think the next meeting is probably going to be, like, landscape design for Savage and Associates, their new addition. Items like that that Gina's familiar with in the code.
How often do they meet?
Just when necessary.
Just when necessary, okay.
It's a private board, basically, for the architectural board of the, you know, Arrowhead community there.
Yeah, and before you were the alternate, who was the alternate before that?
I think Andy Glenn may have been before that.
So zoning administrator?
Zoning administrator, right.
And how often do we appoint that?
Well, we can change our appointment anytime it's not for a set term, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Lineback?
Thank you, Council President Barrow. Item 9B, the promo contract fall tree planting. So I have two concerns about this one. Stick with me on it. So in our council meeting on August 18th, we authorized spending up to $285,000, 325, 285, 325, for fall tree planting. That's what it was titled. Now, that total cost included, with the backup that was provided by Billbury, $108,575 for the purchase of trees and $176,750 for planting. So for trees and planting, it was just, that's what we approved. Now, the current quote we have from promo says that it's for tree planting and watering. So now watering was never addressed in the August 18th authorization. And as I understand, purchase orders totaling about $105,000 have already been, you know, placed for the purchase of trees. I think that's all the trees. And that amount was just under the $108,000 that Billbury had referenced in the budget. The promo quote references, you know, the planting for $137 and watering for $139,500. That planting amount, it would be within budget, but the watering would put the entire spending over the 2025 tree budget by almost $100,000. So I think this overspending needs to be checked. My second concern is that we only received one quote for this. I'm not sure how it was advertised, but that's not my definition of good financial stewardship. I don't know if we did, needed to advertise it more aggressively or seek out more folks, but to know that we're getting the best price, it seems like we have to have more than one, one bid. So I'm really uncomfortable approving this without understanding the separation between watering and planting, what we approved before, and staying with our budget, because we've got lots of sewer expenses to pay for. We should be staying on budget.
Well, my understanding is the watering will go into next year. And it's as, as needed by the city. When the city employees are unable to water, they're going to put tree bags on to water. And so they're, in the contract, it would be as we request, not that's, that they're going to do all the watering.
So it could be, this is essentially the amount, if they would do all the watering, if they would do?
Right, and they don't water over the winter. You know, there'd be watering, what, Matt, some initial watering in the fall. Sometimes we even perform that. It's just when the city is unavailable to do the watering, especially for the initial growth.
Thank you.
I just have a question. Did you share these concerns with staff and get an answer from them?
It just dawned on me Sunday night, maybe even Monday, as I was looking at the numbers and getting some more information to try and understand what we approved on August 18th and what this quote came in. Very explicitly mentioning watering, but we never talked about watering before. And we had a fall budget of the 285. I was concerned about going over budget.
Anybody else have anything?
I don't know if that quote should be, well, aside from the fact that we only got one quote, if that quote needs to be revised in such a way that it's, it's very clear that we're not going to go over budget.
I guess I have two questions, based on what you're saying, like, is, one, was there just one quote or is this just the quote that was selected and now presented to us? I guess that would be one question.
They put it out for bid and that was the only bidder.
That was, so was this the only bidder?
I remember them doing competitive bidding for that.
I would say, it says sealed bid, so that made me believe it was competitive.
Right, it was sealed bidding.
Right. So, but then, is there, Alan, you made it sound like there is flexibility with that watering portion, if they don't have to water as often. I guess that needs to be clarified. Is that what you're, Phil, right?
The agreement provides that, you know, we get to dictate when they water and that they have an amount per round of watering that they would charge us if we have them do any watering.
I think it would, for me, it would be more appropriate if that amount that they quoted were capped at whatever the fall 2025 budget would be, so that we don't go over budget.
Right, that's what I'm wondering.
I did speak to Billbury, and he's aware of the budget, and he understands he has about $40,000 of the 26, or excuse me, the 25 budget remaining for watering.
So some of this, the intention is next year's budget would pick up some of the watering if needed in the spring. So that's probably when a lot of the watering would occur.
So it sounds like it's not quite the $100,000 over, because it's split up. I'm clarifying, I'm asking if it's split up between 25 and 20?
I understand Bill's point, the way it's presented, it is, it's per watering, but the total is 277.
Right.
I understand.
Yeah, it's.
I mean, I understand trees need to be watered, but the way I read that from the August 18th meeting is we were just approving 285, 350, or something like that, for fall of 2025. And with this quote coming in, it's like they could all go, you know, this year. I just want to make sure 2025 doesn't go over budget. And I'm not sure how to do that, with it's an adjustment of the quote, or if it, Alan, if it were buried in the legalese of that contract that, I admit, I didn't read all the details of that. I saw the price and so many waterings, it's so much.
Yeah, it was per round of watering, they charge a fee. So, you know, as indicated, Bill's aware of what his budget provides. Like I said, typically, the city can do some of the watering, but depending on what else they have going on, that when they're not available, we want to have an alternative to be able to make sure they do get watered properly during the growth periods.
Want to someone to smack, Matt, can that be on our schedule then? I imagine it could be.
It could be, yes. I think, I think it's worth looking into, make sure we don't go over the budget.
Right, yeah, that's a concern I'm also concerned about, but that's a good point. Thank you. And Chelsea?
So we passed 285 in August 18th, where the purchasing and the planting didn't include the water. We've got the purchase for the trees and that, so we're saying that that's an additional. I understand that the water's going to be split, but that's outside of this contract price, this 277, the purchase, the actual purchasing of the trees?
Yes, it's different. It's separate.
Okay. So this agreement, the way that it's set up, it says 31 weeks. That's the rounds, the 4,500 over 31 weeks?
If necessary, right.
So is it if necessary, are we committed to that amount?
No, because it says we ask them to provide watering. So it's only when we ask them to provide, that's how much they would charge us for watering. That's how it's set up.
So with this being the fall planting initiative, why wouldn't we just have the amount of weeks left in the year on this contract and then do a new agreement for next year, or whatever, spring watering? Because this, we're passing it now, and it's, we don't have a budget for next year yet, so I'm just trying to understand. I understand that Bill knows and that you know, but I'm looking at it from here, I'm going, it looks like we're committing to this. This is a legal agreement. So I'm just, is there a reason that we didn't just do the watering for the rest of this year, so that it stays within the appropriated amount?
Well, if nothing gets budgeted for next year, then the city's going to have to do the watering. That's how it's going to work.
And that might be okay, isn't that a subject for us to discuss with?
Well, I mean, to be quite honest, we're in October. Granted, it's 80-some degrees out right now. It's about to be 60 tomorrow. But usually, if I'm planting a tree right now, I'm not watering it, aside from watering it in and maybe one more time. But the winter time is usually when it can, it's like I said it and forget it, it's dormant. We get watered from the snow, whatever. I mean, the majority of the watering, I would think, based on what I know about tree planting, is, will be like next year. But yeah, I mean, when you do a contract like this, it's usually, we ask them to provide a year's worth of watering. So I don't know what it comes down to, like, breaking it up between budgets, I mean.
Yeah, I would have to split it between the two years.
Are the, are trees ordered for this fall?
Yes.
Yeah, he did all the orders, yeah.
How many are coming?
600 and some.
Yeah.
And we have, and we have no, no agreement to plant those trees?
He, so he's submitted all of the purchase orders, whether or not he's contacted those individual nurseries, I'm not sure. But no, it was not, it was just the trees.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, anything else on this topic?
Well, can we accept just the portion on planting? How can we do that with promo? They've got to be planted, I get that. And they gave a good quote.
Then you're going to have to rebid the watering, which could go up next year, so.
That's for next year, though, right?
Or if they can't do it, if our city department can't do it this year, then they're not going to get watered.
Well, when they, they plant, they'll water in, when they plant, right? And that would be, that should go in with planting, I would think.
It says that they're water bagged as part of the planting.
Yeah, which, I mean, you wouldn't want to put a, see, I mean, that, those are like details, like, you wouldn't want to put a water bag on now when you're going to start getting frosts, you know? Because you take the water bags off for the winter usually, that's the goal, because you don't want water to still be in there and freeze.
Then why in our contract does it say that we, or to put a bag on there?
That's what, yeah, I, I'm just saying, like, I mean, when we go around, like, I've seen Bill go around and put bags on in the spring and then go around and take them off in the fall. Now, granted, they don't all get taken off because it's different, people have different contracts, but he will go around and put them on and then take them off. So, I mean, but you're right, if it's saying that here, you would assume they're going to put them on as soon as they plant it.
Yeah, and then take them off, so they'll, if the trees get here, they'll get here in a couple of weeks, they'll plant them probably early November, mid-November, and then we go right into winter.
And won't if they don't have a contract, so we'd probably have to rebid it if we're doing something different.
Well, it doesn't seem like that would be so hard, we only got one bid.
Depends on how long you bid it out for.
What was that, Alan?
Depends on how long it takes to re-advertise it, because Bill's out right now, have to re-advertise it and wait, and then for the, whatever council meeting, that could be November then, before you approve it, so it's up to you.
So there's no way just to accept a partial, I mean, because it's one thing to say.
That's not who we ask them to bid it.
Okay, well, we're also asking them just to water as needed. And if we made it clear, we're not going to ask you to water this year, could we, could we issue them a contract that's just for the planting?
No, the contract provides, we can tell them when we want to water, which covers that.
Yeah, so we can, we can follow those rules that you're asking about. We could, we could send them a note, a notice that says, we will handle the watering, so we stay within our budget.
Well, is the only way to stay, you know, in budget to rebid, rebid it?
Do you have a not-to-exceed amount for watering?
Or with a not-to-exceed amount, yeah, for watering.
Well, it seems like when they put out this bid, it was like, this many waterings would cost this much money. We don't use that many, if we don't do that many waterings, it won't be up to that amount. So we're not, oh, I don't see it as we're okaying, you know, this set amount for watering. If it, if we have an agreement that if the city's going to kind of water some, they're going to water some. So essentially, they give us a, they give us the amount that it's going to be up to this for watering. So if they don't use all that, I mean, I guess I don't see that it's like set, like, we're going to be spending this much on watering. If it's like what, you know, Alan said, it's like we're going to water when we can.
But is that, that's, that's my, my main question, because I get the up too, but does the actual agreement say in it that we are committing to that amount? Where, does, do we, can we, do we have a copy of the contract? Because the only thing that I see is it's just, the city agrees to provide the trees to be planted and pay contractor in payment for the performance of this contract, the contract amount and the amount of this $275 for each planting, and then watering the trees for 31 weeks. So to me, and I don't, I'm not a lawyer, but it sure sounds like we are committed to doing at least that amount, no matter what.
If they did all the watering, if they did the watering. Correct, Alan?
Correct.
Well, that's just it, I'm, you know, when I'm reading the thing on the, the bags, it says that they shall purchase and place 25-gallon water bags on each tree planted and maintain watering of the trees after, after planting on agreed-upon schedule. That doesn't mean they're going to do it at planting. I mean, they could plant the trees and not put the bags on until spring. I mean, it's all on how you read it, but they don't say at planting, you know? I mean, I just wanted to bring that up, since it was, that was brought up earlier. I don't see that being necessarily the case.
Actually, indeed, it does. It says that.
After planting?
The watering of the trees after planting on an agreed-upon schedule until the 1st of November.
Right. After planting, not at planting.
I was thinking 2025, I'm sorry, it says 2026, so you're right.
2026, yeah.
You're correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
But from an accounting perspective, is it, isn't it better to have, you know, a purchase order for fall planting and watering just for fall? And if it's going to be in 2026, hit a new budget, have a new PO.
It's when they, yes, when the expense is incurred, yes.
If we were to go through the rebidding process, do we have these trees already on our, on their way here?
Right.
Are we going to have enough time to actually rebid it out and get these planted, or are they just going to sit there and die?
That I can't tell you.
I'm not sure, like I said.
I would assume if you, if you do not have a plan in place to plant them, I would say you're probably correct.
Didn't, you just have the discussion in finance that there is a line at the end that says if council deems it necessary, you can waive the rules and forego bidding? Basically, ask, ask the company for a bid and you don't have to, is that correct? Did I understand it correctly, the discussion you had?
Yeah, well, so, but.
So we don't have to wait the full bidding process, what I'm saying?
Right. But I guess, based on what Alan's saying, it is not clear to me that we have to water with them.
That's how I'm hearing it.
And that's how it's putting us over budget. So we can get, we have the trees on order, we can get them planted. Now, whether they actually do watering or not, I mean, it sounds like we might water so many times, they might water one or none, or 10. And we're going to be charged accordingly, is what I'm hearing. So can we clarify that?
That's the way it's set up.
Yeah, so it seems like we will not go over budget if we make it a point to not go over budget, is what I'm hearing. Especially if we can make sure, if the majority of the watering isn't going to happen until 2026, the whole budget thing really isn't even a topic, because we have yet to discuss budget until later this week, start, starting to, right?
Yes.
Phil?
Okay, so the watering, if we accept this contract as it is, we would instruct them, there's going to be no watering, or certainly no more than $40,000 worth this year.
For 2025, correct.
2025, yeah. And so then that'll be, the PO will be sitting out on the books, so that comes 2026, we'll already have appropriated some money, just in case they do water 41 times. Is that right?
Yes, the remainder then, yes.
Yeah.
Well, if you think about this, to do, I mean, you propose, do a proposal for a certain set of watering, assuming we're not getting rain. But if it rains, they're not watering, and those bags don't let out the water unless the ground is dry enough to a point that allows it. It won't overwater, because they drip out, so if it's wet enough, it's not going to.
No, I get that. I just, my limited financial experience tells me that we like to match expenses with the time period in which they occur. You know, if we're appropriating funds, so we want to do that in the same time period. And this really seemed kind of weird, that it's spread it across. But I understand if we put that limit on them, say, oh, don't, don't plan on watering, then we won't go over our 2025 budget. That was not apparent to me on the initial ones.
That's good, that works, I like that.
It sounds like it.
Okay, on the agenda, any more questions?
Do we need to reword that to accept this under certain revisions?
Yeah, amend the.
Do we need to amend the language so we accept it under what the proposed revisions are?
Yes.
I would say yes, we probably do.
We can add that.
Okay, when we get to that, we'll just, we'll alter that language based on what you were talking about.
That's part of consent, should we move it to new business? Make a different motion?
What was the revision, Alan, on the language?
Just that we would add a provision that the watering would not exceed the budget for 2025 for watering.
Okay.
And so we could make that edit without pulling it, is that what you're asking, Josh? We don't have to separate it?
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
It was nine weeks.
Okay.
And there's 13 weeks left in the year, so we essentially have to water every week.
Okay, I got it.
And they're not planted yet.
And it's going to rain next week.
Maybe, okay.
Okay.
Back to the agenda, any more questions or concerns? Councilman Lineback?
9G, the administration area remodeling project, so Lake Erie, we have this change order. Seems like we've been spending a lot on that administration area remodeling. Can Mr. Griggs, could you let us know that that's it, we're done?
That is it, that's, that's the last cost associated with that project.
Okay, and that work is done, is that correct? Okay.
Anybody else, Chelsea?
I had a question. On 10A, I don't really know much about this project under new business, about this ODOT project. I got a couple of calls about it today, and I don't really know anything about it, other than we're having an agreement. Can we just quickly talk about what that is?
Mr. Griggs, yeah, go ahead.
ODOT approached us, I think it was last fall, about a 25-hour pilot study project. They were looking for several entities in the District 2 to give funding to for these pilot test studies. And we had nominated several streets throughout Miami, but when the money portion came through, we were only able to do certain portions of it. And then ODOT really kind of picked and chose, you know, the areas that they thought were, would give us the most benefit. So essentially, it's from, it's Dussel Drive, east of Reynolds Road, all the way over to Key Street. There's a, it's a crosswalk, there's a few crosswalks that are going to, like, so far, all we have is like the schematic plan. There's been no full-blown design done yet. This, this legislation allows us to enter into an agreement with them to be the, it's going to be an ODOT-led project, meaning that they will manage all the aspects of it. We will have input on the design up until, you know, stage three. There will be a public, like, comment period that they will send out to the public, and then based on feedback, may or may not make changes to the design and the scope. There was, we scaled it down quite a bit from the original proposal, just based on a funding aspect, just because I didn't see the need to, you know, spend any more than we had to on the project. But, so, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a minimal impact, but hopefully a positive safety input. And it's mainly influenced between Piccadilly and CAFS around the curve there, where it's four lanes, taking it down to two with a, like, an island and a median, and then. uh, like a, an island and a median. Um, and then there's a, I think there's one crosswalk, so it'd be a raised crosswalk. So those are like meant to slow cars down. It's a speed thing. Um, that would be between Piccadilly and Cass, and then between Cass and Key. I believe there are three other crosswalks with the intersection improvement at Eastfield for the school safety crossing. Um, and then down at Key Street, uh, the goal is to get rid of that traffic signal that's very old. Uh, it would cost way more to replace. Um, so it's just going to become like a three way stop, I think, is the, the current design for that. And we would shift, um, the road slightly so that we could utilize the southern portion of that, uh, for a future pump station project that we have to do.
So, and this will be, this is funded by ODOT?
Yes. So ODOT has offered at least $900,000 for this project. Um, the proposed scope, I think, was around one point, one million. But they said that, you know, when we met in July, they said that there was a potential, if another candidate dropped out, that that funding would be split across the other entities that did get awarded the money. So the goal would be not to spend any additional money, obviously, out of our budget. Um, so that's, that's going to be my goal when we meet. Once they send us to design, then we have a chance to review it. Um, then we'll have a better idea. All, so, so far, it's just been like a, a big estimate.
Okay.
Um, so we don't have any of the, like, the real good figures yet.
And when we get some of those designs, will, they'll have their own public comment period? Will we also get to see some of them?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Because I know that's, that was one of the main concerns I got from people, is they all felt like they don't know. And I said, I don't know either, so I'll ask.
Yep.
Yeah, it's just kind of hitting the books on this. And they're providing the money. It was an area that they thought really, um, rose to the level of being unsafe, based on their engineering designs, especially the intersection at Piccadilly and Dussel. It's squirrely, it's got a three way stop there. It's not, it's not real safe. And then you're going into a 25 mile an hour, four lane road, which isn't practical, and it's a bus route. And, um, and then proceed up Dussel to Key. So when they looked at a lot of variables, they said it really fit the, the whole idea of reengineering it, making it a whole safer thing through there. But, yeah, the goal is to not spend any, sending money on it. And, um, yeah. And, and also, it's like, uh, spring of 2027. So you're still, these projects take at least
Sure.
Yeah, a year and a half to three years sometimes out.
And it was their sort of suggestion on where, what would be the best use?
Yes.
I was going to say, I thought I remembered, like, them having, like, crash data or something that really led to, like, certain spots being ones to be looked at.
They did. So they, they did a speed study for the whole street, um, and kind of provided us. One of the big ticket items was going to be the intersection of Piccadilly and how we wanted to treat that. So they offered, uh, three alternates. Um, and we went with the most cost effective one. Um, so while still getting, like, the safety factor out of it.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
But this is just a follow on to that. So if, as they, they're executing that project, so they'll do the design, I'm sure that there's no question that there's enough money to do the complete design from, you know, Dussel, I mean, like from Reynolds Road, essentially through Piccadilly all the way to Key. Plenty of money for the design.
Right.
When it comes to construction, if it looks like, uh, there's not enough money to do that whole thing, we're definitely prepared to say, oh, we're going to hold off on this section.
Absolutely. Yeah. So we've done a little bit of that already.
Okay.
Um, there was more things that we were proposing to add, but it was just going to take the cost up too high.
Do you have, do they have any idea when, like, when they would know? Like, do other communities have a certain date that they have to say, no, we don't want to do this or not, that we would know whether we get more, you know?
Um, I think, I think that period has closed. When we, like I said, when we met in July, I think they told me that, uh, one of the other, like, people that were awarded either dropped out or were, like, in the process of dropping out. So I don't know if that $900,000 is it, um, but once
We have to get an update.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Matt. Any other questions on that? Anything else?
Not on that one.
No, Phil.
Okay, moving on.
Uh, 10B, uh, the Environmental Tree Commission Resolution. I thought, before I made my comments on this, I thought it would be helpful if it were read, you know, so that people know what's in this resolution. Is that possible? Can we do that, Mr. Mayor? Just actually have it read aloud?
If you'd like.
Do you want to read it, Mayor?
We also have, um, a representative from Power Clean Future Ohio, Matt, is here.
Okay.
They wanted to make themselves available for any questions too, so if people do have questions that we can't answer.
Okay, let, let me just read the resolution and then my comments. So this is a resolution authorizing the City of Mami to become a Power a Clean Future Ohio community, and to adopt the goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the city. Whereas, and all these whereas's are essentially statements of fact, as I understand. Is that legal? It's kind of acknowledging this is a fact. Whereas, Power Clean Future Ohio is an expansive, diverse coalition engaging with cities and local governments across the state of Ohio to build a clean future for our communities, and empowers local leaders with tools and resources to create carbon reduction plans and implement them in ways that are achievable, measurable, equitable, and economical. And whereas, steps taken toward carbon emissions also aim to improve community quality of life, building community capital, and increasing government efficiency, accountability, and transparency. And whereas, local governments have the unique opportunity to achieve both energy use and carbon emission reductions and cost savings through building and facilities management, land use and transportation planning, and through economic and community development. And whereas, efforts to address energy and climate issues provide an opportunity to move toward energy self reliance and greater community resiliency and quality of life, provide environmentally healthy and cheaper to operate public buildings, encourage new development and local jobs, and support local renewable energy production. And whereas, the City of Mami has begun this effort by installing EV charging stations in the parking lot behind City Hall at 400 Conan Street. And whereas, uncertainty in energy prices and the transition away from fossil fuel energy sources present new challenges and opportunities to both the City of Mami and to the economic health of its citizens and businesses. And whereas, climate changes have been observed in Ohio and have the potential to negatively impact local, regional, and state economies, infrastructure development, habitat, ecological communities, including native fish and wildlife populations, spread invasive species and exotic diseases, reduce drinking water supplies and recreational opportunities, and pose flooding, drought, and health threats to our citizens. And whereas, Power Clean Future Ohio assists in facilitating technical assistance for the implementation of these carbon reduction policies. And whereas, the Power Clean Future Ohio provides cost effective, sustainable development policies in the following four categories: renewable energy, energy efficiency, transportation, electrification, and land use. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council, the City of Mami. Section one, City of Mami is hereby authorized to participate in Power a Clean Future Ohio that offers a free voluntary continuous improvement framework. Passage of this participation resolution allows the city to be recognized as a 2025 Power a Clean Future community. Section two, the city hereby commits, to the extent possible, the incorporation of sustainability goals into future planning and opportunities for the City of Mami. Two, will develop a plan during fiscal year 2025, 26 that lays out a roadmap for the City of Mami to achieve this goal and to proactively seek input from the community in developing this plan. Three, will prioritize the lowest cost measures identified in the plan to meet energy needs, to be mindful of the use of taxpayer dollars and any impact of consumers' personal expenses. Number four, appoint Matthew Griggs to serve as the city's PCFO coordinator for implementation, and as appropriate, identifies the Environmental and Tree Advisory Commission as the city's PCFO coordination team. Number five, will facilitate the involvement of community members in an equitable way and other units of government as appropriate in the planning, promoting, and/or implementing of PCFO policies. And six, will provide feedback once a year on how well PCFO is serving the city and on city needs from the program. And seven, will claim credit, this is, the city will claim credit for having implemented and will work at its own pace toward implementing any policies from two of the PCFO policy categories that will result in carbon emission reductions, cost savings, and quality of life improvement. Um, that's, that's pretty much it. So I have, I just have two comments. My comments will be less than the resolution. You know, one, uh, I, I don't know, understand why this is not going to be a first reading. I think the implications of this resolution are potentially very far reaching. Uh, very few of Mami's residents probably know who Power a Clean Future Ohio is, and what an alliance of this kind, of the kind that's proposed might mean for them. I think far more public education should take place before adopting such a resolution. And then second, I'm willing to grant that the Power Clean Future Ohio organization may have some, some good ideas about how to improve the quality of life for Mami residents. But I suspect that we can readily learn what they have to offer without entering into such an agreement. I believe it is unwise for any city to commit itself to the policies of a non-governmental organization. Different NGOs may be able to offer advice, but they should not have a seat at the decision making table. By voting for this resolution, we relinquish a, a degree of our independence by limiting ourselves to only PCFO's policy solutions. Are those the only ones worth considering? We, as a city, can easily adopt whatever goals we choose to improve the quality of life in our community. Some of those goals may coincide with PCFO's, while others may not. We can do everything in this resolution that makes sense for us without voting for it. And I just want to repeat that. We can do everything in this resolution that makes sense for Mami without voting for it.
Well, we cannot do without, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just one comment, Mr. Barrow.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. Um, so this was brought to the council, um, from the Environmental and Tree Commission, which has a number of our residents that serve on it. They read it, and that's their recommendation to council, which, um, this commission is full of residents that live here. They looked at it, and, um, it's before council for you to decide, and you're certainly welcome to vote now. Go ahead. Thank you.
Um, and I would just like to add to kind of some of what you were saying, is that we are not required to then go forward with the things that PCFO are recommending and have no other options to consider. Um, one of the benefits, um, for them, for, well, first of all, they will not provide any of the benefits if we have not signed a resolution, because they, they will not start putting the work forward to helping us, helping us gather data and, um, determine, you know, cost saving possibilities until they know that we're actually committed. So the resolution is essentially saying that we are committed. Um, we would like you to help us with some of these topics. Um, Jennifer and Matt have both looked at some of the options. We had a presentation with Nat, um, and saw, really saw a benefit in some of the cost saving opportunities with our buildings. Um, this came up a few months back when, um, I think it was during the enterprise talks, and Jennifer was going through idling, kind of determining cost savings with, with our fleet. And I was telling her how the City of Toledo had done this process with PCFO. They provided, provided them with a slew of data based on what our needs were and gave suggestions, all for free. Um, so they essentially give you data to help support ideas that you might have. And then you can make a decision to go forward with that or not. There's no requirements at all, and it's all free. So the way we kind of saw it as, is, is saving our staff the, the time of having to gather all that information. Obviously, they are more than able to gather additional information that maybe PCFO did not include in their, in their, you know, study, um, to then also be considered along what they gathered. They can also decide not to do it, once, you know, the recommendation or, you know, the information is, is put before the city. Um, so it's, it's not, we are not held to anything to make sure this happens. But Jim's right, we, we, we went through a presentation at our last Environmental and Tree Advisory Commission. We've got a total of, I think, nine committee members, which at least, what, seven are residents, I think? Um, and everyone, you know, the people that were there all unanimously felt like it was a great idea to, um, to sign on and see what benefits we can get as a city. And it, and a lot of them being cost saving benefits, because a lot of times, I, what I've experienced, when you try to move to a more kind of sustainable, less wasteful life, you, it comes with cost savings to go along with it.
Okay, so from my understanding of this, this is free?
Yes.
It's voluntary?
Yes.
They give you data and examples of things you can do?
And you can choose whether to do it or not.
And you are not required to do it, but if it does turn out good, you can do it?
Right. And it, it says in here, like, financially, they, they allow you to make decisions that if financially it does not make sense, it will be too much. It's, you know, it doesn't make sense, you don't do it.
So is the resolution because otherwise we won't get the commitment from them for the data gathering?
Yes, right. So this is one of their steps, like, to get the commitment that they know we are serious and what, we utilize their services, at least take them seriously. Um, it's like, you know, designating someone to speak to and kind of be in correspondence with, um, and then, you know, present to their findings.
Yeah, that's how I understood it. And, uh,
At our meeting?
Yeah.
Counsel President, give.
Yes, counsel, my vote.
So that's, that's good. There were a handful of citizens who were involved, but seven out of, I don't know how many voters, 5,000, it's not a whole lot. Um, so that, that's my point about broader education, and at least at a minimum, having a first reading, so people can try to understand what this is. Um, and secondly, I, I think if they have this wealth of data that helps people make decisions, um, why not just give it to us? If that's their interest? And there are energy companies that help with energy conservation, offer free consultation on how, like, the building, we can use less energy.
Right. It's very specific to our buildings, the size, how much energy you're using. I mean, they'll, like, with other municipalities, they determined that, um, their water treatment plant was one of the spaces where they used the most electricity. So they decided to move forward with creating a solar, a floating solar panel array that helped counteract some of the energy that they were using. So they're essentially saving money on that project by, you know, producing the energy themselves. Um, so it's very tailored to the community and the specific details of that community.
I'd like to add that the seven people referred to in this committee, they're very dedicated, educated, and they're really involved in depth in a lot of the aspects of the environment.
And so are many of our other residents.
Well, right, but that's kind of saying the rest of our committees, I mean,
I guess there's seven people here that represent the entire city. Okay, let's move on. I'm sorry. Any, any other remarks? Okay. Thank you. Anything else on the agenda that's needed to be spoken about?
Uh, master plan discussion?
Oh, yes. Master plan?
Yes.
Um, so kind of update on that. Um, we had a meeting the other day, and, um, we've gotten some, they've taken, they are currently taking our input from a draft plan that we received, excuse me, and updating the, the plan they put together to give us a clean copy to go through again. Um, so we, we wanted to talk about our next steps. Um, so like one of the options they would have normally done, they would have normally presented it to council. It's been a while back now, but it kind of has gotten pushed. Um, so they would, the thought is right now that once we get a cleaned up copy, that could potentially be something that gets presented to council. Um, I, I, I was thinking that in the process, because there has been, um, you know, people have brought up whether, you know, it makes sense to, um, finish it now or wait until we get a city administrator. Um, but my kind of response to that is, we started this plan in January or so, 2024, it was early in 2024, I think, when we selected Yard. Um, it's normally like a year or two process, but they've kind of been ready to go to the next point for a while now. And it, it's gotten delayed for one reason or another, on both ends, I feel like. Um, but it is definitely something that needs to keep moving, keep, be, kept moving forward. Um, I think we're at a point now that once we get these cleanups and we get it presented back to us, I feel like we're in a good spot, that I think we'll be very close to being to that point to kind of like finalize it. And, you know, I see it as, uh, the opportunity, having that plan, um, is, is a great thing to have. Kind of when we do, uh, do those interviews for a new city administrator, it, it, it has gone out and gotten data. They did surveys and things from residents. They were at the summer fair a couple of years ago. They did online surveys. They put things out there for residents to give feedback, feedback about with some of the ideas they were proposing. Um, so I feel like it gives a good kind of overview to anyone that is coming to interview, kind of what, what are some ideals and goals? And, you know, these plans give you kind of an action plan for the next five to 10 years. Um, so it will give the candidates an idea So it will give the candidates an idea of what our goals are for the next few years. So I think it would be great to have this finalized, especially when we're so close, and get it out there to be able to be utilized.
So Marco, were you saying you're waiting? Want to wait for a new administrator to be part of that?
No, that was a comment that was brought up, like, you know, should we wait? We ended up having a meeting to talk more about the comments because, I mean, so their whole thing was momentum, Mami momentum. And you do get a certain momentum going when you're going through this process. And I think we really, we're so close to the end now to stop and let it hang, to then, you know, not finalize until, I mean, who knows when? When we get a new city administrator, it just doesn't seem to make sense to me.
So you're thinking of getting this cleaned up already by...
So they, when we met with them, they thought it would take a couple of weeks for us to get the cleaned-up copy. So it should be soon, and then we can kind of finalize next steps, like maybe, depending on when it's back, the next city council meeting that, you know, works with their schedule, they could come and present it to us if that's where we're at. But Jim and I talked about just kind of giving an update to everyone and make sure everyone was okay with that kind of timeline and with moving forward in that way.
Thank you. There's nothing further? This ends committee of the whole?
Thank you. We'll move to citizen comments. The meetings of council are business meetings for purpose of discussion by council and consideration of matters or issues related to the business of Mami. The purpose of the meeting rules is to promote efficient, orderly, and productive meetings and reduce disruption at these meetings. Members of the public are allowed the opportunity to speak under the rules set by council. All comments should be respectful. Council meetings are not the form for personal attacks. The city comment period is meant for matters or issues related to the business of the city or of Mami. We have three that have listed comments. Ms. Sherri Shunk, you would state your address, please? Or the residence that you live in? I'm sorry, not your address, yeah.
Sherri Shunk, Mami.
Thank you.
Okay, usually I come up here busting your chops on air of your ways, but that's like talking to the wall. So instead, I'd like to express what I'm looking for in a council member. I've had the unique opportunity to not only meet and to get to know most of the candidates, but I also had the pleasure of going door-to-door, talking with my neighbors and the citizens of Mami. I appreciate that so many have valued my opinion. I want to tell you about one of those candidates running and a secret that I can no longer keep. While working the recall on Friday, May 16th, about 4:00 p.m., I started going door-to-door on Village Trail. I came upon a house with grass that was higher than my knees. At first, I thought it was a vacant home and just kept walking until I saw that there was a car in the carport. So I went to the door. I was greeted by a woman visibly shaken. I told her why I was there, but it was her response that saddened me. She thought I was from the city, who was just there at her home that day at 2:00 p.m., telling her that if she didn't mow her grass by Sunday, that the city would do it and charge her for that service plus 100 percent. She explained to me what she told the city worker, that she's battling two types of cancer, which leaves her too weak to stand for a period of time, and that her father, who was coming from 30 minutes away to mow her grass, injured his back, no longer able to do it. She told me that the city gave her two numbers to call to come and mow, but all she was getting was their answering machine. She broke down in tears and basically told me her life story. I told her I had two stops to make for signatures, and I would be back with my lawnmower, which is battery-operated. I hugged her, went home, got my mower, but my battery lawnmower couldn't handle that tall grass. I went home to plug it back, oh, excuse me, back in, and I put out a help post on Mami Matters. And before I could even get that post on there for a minute, I immediately got a text at 5:56 from Andy Hugie. The text read, "Sherri, I will head over and mow. Can you just comment? It is taken care of. I don't want to advertise." I went over to check on Andy because it was hot, and I wanted to take his photo as photo op, like you guys did with the snow. Andy politely told me that that's not the time for a photo op, that he's not doing it because he's running in the recall. He's doing it because it's the right thing to do. And I'm going to repeat what Andy said, because it's the right thing to do. I also want to acknowledge another man that jumped in to help to get that grass mowed that evening, John Scott, who is with C Mac.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
I just want, I got one line. To everyone sitting behind me and those watching online, I just want to say that what these two men did are attributes of great leaders. The most truly generous persons are those who give silently without hope of praise, reward, or recognition. Andy Hugie will be an asset to City Council.
Thank you very much.
You're more than welcome.
Yep. Isaiah Gonzalez.
I have two things to kind of talk about. One was Nat with PCFO. I was at that meeting, and actually, it was probably my fault that it's on the agenda tonight because they forgot to put a motion for, to pass it tonight. It's a great program. It's a free service. It's moving to the future. It's literally free. You ask advice, would be the 52nd city in Ohio to be participating with them. The way her presentation went was really thought out, and the company is five years old. They have philanthropy. It's all funded for all our free service to get ideas for the future. And like Marco said, it is tailored to each individual city, which is a positive thing because there's costs that we need to cut back on. Another thing is, and I'm more than nervous about it, is that as soon as a consent decree does go through and AT signs it, our building department for inspections is nowhere near going to be able to handle that kind of inspection process for nearly 4,000 houses that you want, that we want to do in the next five to seven years. We really need a chief building officer put back in place. We do, we need more, a couple more guys for inspections. If that does not happen, then this is going to be a, there's no plan to move forward besides, hey, we got the consent decree signed. That's great and all, but there's no one to inspect all these houses. They got to go in and inspect it beforehand and inspect it afterwards after, when you file for your permit, or the company does. So that's really something that the Personnel Committee meeting, people need to start looking for because a part-timer, and then talking to Gina, she said they sub out to Wood County and to another entity. We shouldn't be subbing that work out when it's in our back, it's almost every home here. It's something that we need to be more progressive for, for our resolution to clean up our sanitary problems. Thank you.
Thank you. John Scott.
John Scott, Greenfield Drive. I want to talk about trees. I'm not against them, but I am against spending, unnecessary spending. Phil and Chelsea brought up a couple of the concerns I had, as well as there's some others. This weekend, I spent three hours driving around Mami. I know at the August meeting, it was discussed that trees help with the sewer problem. From my understanding, Arrowhead doesn't have a sewer issue, and that's where a lot of our trees are planted at. A lot of trees at a 30-degree angle. We have oak trees landscaping a soybean field along Indian Wood. There's five to seven spruces in a row that are completely dead. There's oak trees planted back by Savage. They're called shingle oak. They grow to a maturity of about 60 feet. They have the same canopy as what their height is, which is roughly about 50 to 60 feet. Generally, they should be planted about 50 feet apart. I went back out with a pH test kit, a tape measure. Most of those trees are planted about 25 feet apart, five foot off the curb. The way we water them with the water bags doesn't infiltrate the roots good enough, providing oxygen flow for the nitrogen, phosphorus, and potassium to reach the roots and help those roots establish stronger. Instead, what we're doing is allowing roots to grow shallow, which over time will cause a tree to fall. It will destroy curbs. It will heat pavement. They'll fight for nutrients. And I just see, not understanding the process of how these trees were designed, I know Bill came up with an idea of a scale of zero to 20 on what's a good ideal location. I'm just wondering if actual pH tests were done to see what amendments needed to be done to the soil, whether compost needed to be added, whether any additional nutrients needed to be put in that ground. Same thing along the trail. There's about a dozen or more trees that are either dying, they're in shock, or they're in stress. The ones that border the soybean field, a lot of the tips are brown, which means that they have a deficiency from phosphorus. Phosphorus isn't something that's naturally provided by the earth. It's very rare and makes up a very small part. It has to be added through compost or some sort of an organic matter. I understand that trees are important. The canopy coverage needs to be replaced, but I also think the information that lies within trees also needs to be discussed, looked at further. After seeing the row of dead trees on Indian Wood, obviously, something wasn't done properly there. Either a soil amendment needs to be done, something needs to be changed with the water or something. Twenty-five trees are being replaced due to dead ones. We didn't pay $10,000 for those trees, the planting and the watering. We essentially paid for $50,000, $60,000 for 25 trees.
Thank you. Can you wrap up your comments, please?
That's all I have.
Okay.
Well, there is one other comment. I appreciate the effort of Marco. Your stuff is very well organized, but at the same time, I think that some organization needs to be done for the water rate studies. If we can pay $400 to water trees that people elect have on their property, we can do something better for the seniors.
Thank you. All right, we'll move for the adoption of the agenda. So I need a motion to approve the agenda as revised, I guess, amended with the one comment. Yes?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor McDonald. I'm going to make a motion to approve the adoption, or the agenda as amended.
Thank you.
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussion on that, and we'll call the roll?
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
Yes.
Hovenberger.
Yes.
Ziz.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Approval of the meeting minutes of September 15th. I need a motion in a second, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the meeting minutes of the September 15th, 2025 meeting.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We'll call the roll.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
Yes.
Hovenberger.
Yes.
Ziz.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Approval of the meeting minutes of September 15th. I need a motion in a second, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the meeting minutes of the September 15th, 2025 meeting.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We'll call the roll.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
Yes.
Hovenberger.
Yes.
Ziz.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
And 10B is a recommendation from the Environmental and Tree Advisory Commission to approve Resolution 29-2025, authorizing the city of Mami to become a power-clean-future-Ohio community and to adopt a goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the city. We also...
a future council meeting. And a few other ordinances were brought up that appeared need to be edited based on 103 getting edited. So I was going to make sure, I'll email a list to Allen as a reminder to go through those and make sure they get updated accordingly with the 103.
Thank you. And Personnel meeting on September 24th?
Sure. We just now received, we're waiting for an HR job description, as I understand, that just came in today, so we'll be moving forward with that.
Okay. And the Environmental and Tree Advisory Commission met on September 25th?
Yes, and we heard a presentation from Power Clean Future Ohio, which is on the agenda today, and then we discussed planning for events in 2026, and Gabe mentioned he would work on getting a budget, excuse me, together so we can get, we can figure out kind of the overall cost for hosting movies and having different presentations. But most of the time, we don't have any expenses except for here and there with a movie licensing.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on that? We will call the roll on the petition in Communication.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Linebacke.
Yes.
Puffenberger.
Yes.
Ziz.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
9A is a recommendation from the Public Service Director to authorize the quotes from Selking International and Kallida Truck Equipment for the purchase of a 2026 International CB Crew Cab truck outfitted with a service body and a tiller rack at a cost of $113,675, and authorize the Public Service Director to effectuate the agreement and approve any additional change orders not to exceed 10% of the total contract. And this is a B fund capital expenditure that comes off of the budget. Any discussion on that? Yeah, we need a motion in a second, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we'll first entertain a motion to approve all the consent calendar items in a second.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I'd like to make a motion to approve all consent calendar items.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on A, the truck? Okay, B is a recommendation from the Law Director to accept bids for tree planting and watering from Ma'ami Promo. Authorize the mayor or the public service director to enter into an agreement with Ma'ami Promo for fall tree planting and watering not to exceed the 2025 budget. Okay. C is a recommendation from the Finance Committee authorizing the compensation for the acting water supervisor to be paid at a range of three. Step F, effective with pay periods beginning 9/22 through 12/28 or until the water supervisor returns to duty, which he is on extended leave, and it's important that we have some supervision and direction in that department. So he's filling in until the regular supervisor returns. Anything on that? And a recommendation from the Finance Committee authorizing the Public Service Director to receive a pro-rated stipend for his water sewer licensure as outlined in the manager's ordinance. This is basically giving Mr. Griggs the benefit that he earned up to August before he got promoted. And then recommendations from the mayor confirming the appointment of Gina Schell as the City of Ma'ami representative to the Arrowhead Architectural Board, which was filling a vacancy that Mr. Birch left. We had discussion on that in committee of the whole. Recommendation from the mayor under F, the first reading of Ordinance 28, 2025, and ordinance amending Ma'ami Codified Ordinance Section 1105.03 Design Review Board and Ordinance 106-2020. It's basically taking those terms and putting them at an expiration at the end of the year. Recommendation from the Public Service Director authorizing the change order from Lake Erie Electric in the amount of $26,361 and amend the 2025 budget, transfer the appropriate funds, and authorize the Public Service Director to effectuate the change order. We had discussion on that, committee of the whole. Recommendation from the mayor for designee to enter an agreement for services from Artic Wolf, a three-year subscription for IT security, maintenance, and support in the amount of $70,742 for one year and $83,246 for the additional two years. This is what it says. It's basically IT security for our city. And under I, recommendation from the Chief of Police and the mayor to enter into a renewal agreement with Norris, which is the Northwest Ohio Regional Information System, through the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, an amount of $24,053.85 for the implementation of Norris software and applications. This is basically how we get our information into the police division. And J was the addition, which is authorizing the mayor or the law director to enter into a stop-loss coverage contract with Med Mutual of Ohio. Anything further on that? We'll call the roll on the consent counter.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Linebacke.
Yes.
Puffenberger.
Yes.
Ziz.
Yep.
Farrell.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
And then I will move to approve Ordinance 027-2025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or public service director to enter into an agreement for a federal ODOT-led project for Dussel Drive in Ma'ami, Ohio.
And I will second that motion as well.
We'll call the roll.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Linebacke.
Yes.
Puffenberger.
Yes.
Ziz.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
And then I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 029-2025, a resolution authorizing the City of Ma'ami to become a Power Clean Future Ohio community and to adopt a goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the city. We also had a lengthy discussion on this. Need two motions on this, please, Ms. Puffenberger. Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I'd like to make a motion to waive the three readings.
I second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Linebacke.
No.
Puffenberger.
Yes.
Ziz.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Thank you, that's approved. We'll move on to comments. I would like to make one comment. Last meeting, a gentleman, Mr. Cobal, came up and talked about kind of violence in our country, violence in our community, how people kind of react in that way. I would just kind of like to make just a personal message on that and just take a moment to talk about it in our world and how people choose violence in response to situations they don't agree with. Conflict, disputes, and violence has been part of our world since the beginning of time. One common thread is a violent response is a choice. It's an individual choice. We should be a community against acts of violence. As a people, as a community, we should seek peace, seek out ways to be kind, and seek out acts of kindness to our family and our neighbor. We should seek out ways to avoid the tunnel of conflict, to be a peacemaker. We have two buckets of choice when we respond to something. One is a bucket of water, and another is a bucket of gasoline. Wisdom indeed yields patience. Start with ourselves and how we respond and deal with people that we don't agree with. There is power in humility. Value others above ourself. Not about ganging up on somebody, and it's not about building your case and trying to win. We should be a restorer and seek peace with each other as a community. There really is no us and them, aren't we all Americans? And I will move to Mr. Harris.
I have no comments this evening.
Mr. Kurt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know, is Katie Peedy here? I don't see her. I don't see anything, but I would like to, Mary and I attended the Autumn Market at the Walcott campus this past weekend, and Katie organized the Autumn Market. And she took that thing to heart, and the event was exceptionally well organized. Katie also is involved, or was involved, this past summer with the Ma'ami, previously with the Ma'ami Summer Fair, but particularly the Ma'ami Farmer's Market. She's currently coordinating the Paranormal Tour at Walcott House. I don't know if I would have done that or not. It's kind of scary. But, and I don't know, but the Lanterns and Legions Ghost Walk at Walcott. Whether I want to go or not, she's doing a great job of taking on these responsibilities. She's an entrepreneur, has a bed and breakfast place in town here, and I would just like to recognize Katie. I wish she were here. I would like to recognize Katie for everything she does for us. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. It's funny, a story I have about Katie, and talking to her is, I did not know this, but her uncle was a big boat guy who lived in California. Through a number of different avenues, I ran into him and his business, and it was just odd that she was, that was her Uncle Steve when I was talking to her. It was just very different than, I've been talking to this guy in another facet of my life, and yet it was connected to Katie. It was pretty wild. We will move to Mr. Linebacke.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. In connection with the mayor's comments about being kind, showing, we had two great examples here mentioned tonight, we just need to lead by example. We need to choose for ourselves how we're going to act. That'll send a strong message. And also, I want to thank Councilwoman Puffenberger and whoever was working with her for your work on the master plan. A little overtime, and that was really important, not to have any loose ends dangling there with all the effort that's been put into that. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Puffenberger.
Thank you. So I also want to tell, Autumn Market, I got to go very quickly. It was very nice. They've got a lot of great events happening out at the Walcott House. I did have someone come up to me today before the meeting, so I thought it was worth mentioning in comments to kind of put a bug in everyone's ears, but since it's now October 6th, kind of wondering when, you know, we're going to hear about the consent decree. And this was brought up previously, like earlier in the year, is whether there's a need or want to extend the grant because we haven't gotten the consent decree back for 2025. So like essentially, some of the benefits that happened in '25, and they no longer happen in 2026, since there's only a couple of months remaining this year, whether we will look to kind of push that back is something we kind of talked about earlier this year. And I also want to say to John, did he leave? Is he still here?
He left.
He left. So if anyone can let him know, I'd like to talk to him more about trees, because there's a lot of things that he said that I feel like I have, we could have quite a conversation. So if anyone has his contact information, or just let him know, mine's online somewhere, he can contact me. I'd love to have a tree conversation with him. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ziz.
I just had a couple of things. I'll go quick, because I know we're coming off of another meeting, so we've all been here for a little bit. I always see some head-shakings when we get to points where we waive three readings or declare an emergency for something. And you know I vote against things, but I don't feel like it's necessary. Both of these items on here are really good for the city. The second one, even if you don't like it or don't care for it, is free, voluntary, and not compulsory. We'll get good data from it, even if it ends up not being something we can or want to do. And money from ODOT and being able to, I felt really comfortable with that after hearing our public service director saying that he wants to keep it within budget as possible so that we can utilize that money without having to go and spend more on top of it. The only other thing that I was going to mention was, we had also talked about the change orders, and that is one of the things, for those of you who are paying attention, those are some items that we needed to go through, and that part of what they're looking at in Chapter 103 is reining in some of those change orders, making sure they're under control, because I always have an issue when we are approving something for work that has already been completed. And that is something that we talked about, too. We had a really good conversation, and going forward, I think it'll be a lot better. That's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Farrell.
Thank you. Hi, Chelsea, too. Saw some head shakes, lots of meetings, especially when you talk about trees and expenses and watering. When you do things, it's like when you first start building a house, remodeling a house, you walk into that house, and you're thinking, oh my gosh, this place is a rack. But after it's done, you see the fruits of your labor afterwards. Your house is worth more, you're getting more for it, whether you're buying it, selling it, or renting it. The vision we have had, which people may have not heard this before, maybe they have, is to make Ma'ami stand out, make it a place where people want to come to, make it a destination, as Rich Carr, Mayor Carr used to say, make it a destination. People are now coming. The sidewalks are busier, Uptown is busier. We have an awful lot of businesses that have come to Ma'ami that are coming that, because of, you know, confidentiality, we can't talk about them, but they're coming here because of all the improvements, because it's a nice city, we have trees, we have sidewalks, and it's safe. So I just tell you, please bear with the process, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Fiskus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few of my items got touched on, so I'll kind of breeze through them. I did want to commend the Uptown Business Association for the farmer's market. It's not easy to put those things together, and I know this one has been a few years in the making. They've been talking about it for a long time, and it's been a lot of volunteers putting in hard work. So to all those people that helped organize it, volunteered at it, thank you, and hopefully it comes back next year bigger and better than ever. I also got to go to the Autumn Market. It was great. While I was there, I learned about the Legends and Lanterns Tour, which sounds really cool. It's a lantern-lit tour at night of the Walcott House, if you've never done it. I hear it's great. It's October 18th and 25th. Also, on the 18th, it's my duty as a lifelong band nerd to tell you, Music in Motion is at the High School Stadium. 4:45 it starts. There are 18 bands slated to be there this year, and with it being the last chance for them to qualify, there's always a chance they could add more bands. Playground at Ford Field is getting very close. It's in the Look But Don't Touch stage. There is a fence up, do not cross it. The cameras are on it, they will come after you. We are going to do a ribbon cutting when it's ready. We're going to try and get the planters and everything out here to celebrate it. It looks awesome. I've been obsessively going over there every day after work for the last week or so as it gets nearer completion. And then Public Information Committee, you wanted me to do one, right? You talked about it.
Yes, so Nancy and I were talking a little bit about it. We have the survey going. What we were thinking about is getting some input meetings, like maybe at the library. So I don't know if it's something that we put a meeting together for or not.
Yeah, we'll talk. We'll set a date.
Yes, if so.
And then talk about that. Perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.